We'll get started. Let's all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like everyone to know that item 53327 Dogwood has been postponed and will not be heard this evening. And item 36525 Wing Lake Road has also been postponed and will not be heard this evening. So if you're here for those, there's no need to stay. Let's take attendance.
So noted.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 13th, 2024?
I move to second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of September 10th, 2024. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific requests before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you. We'll now call the first case, item number one, 335 Waddington. Is the applicant ready?
Yes. Good evening. Brian Ritter with BMR Design, speaking on behalf of Mike Michael Wendt at 335 Waddington Road. We're here seeking permission to install a front porch on their home. It is in, we've worked directly with Bloomfield Village and modified the design a little bit to meet some of the aesthetics that they were looking for. We went to one of their board meetings, sought their approval, and did receive approval on it. Our biggest hurdle right here is that the home itself doesn't meet Bloomfield Township setback requirements on the front of the home. So it's, I think the garage is 36 foot four, and even the front door itself is only at about 38 feet. So no matter what, we're just in a non-conforming position. We're only asking that it cover the existing front porch area itself, not to go any further than that in width or depth, which is indicated on the drawings. And, you know, it's really simply to help protect their guests as they're arriving to their home and packages and things as they're delivered to the home.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the board? I'll open this for public comment, so anyone that would like to speak on this item.
Good evening. Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village Association. Our board did review this in, I think, the July meeting. The structure itself is consistent with the architecture of the home. We felt that it enhanced the look of the home. It is an existing non-conforming structure, but we think this is a nice enhancement to it, and we recommend approval of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
But in regard to the appeal at 335 Waddington Road for the variance, removing variance be approved as requested based on the information presented, the applicant demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because applies to district.
Brian, could you check her microphone?
Due to fact, the house is already non-conforming.
Andrew, pull up your mic. Continuing, there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact this is consistent with our other homes in the area. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated given the, the home is currently non-conforming, and it's not self-created due to the fact that this is consistent with other homes in the area, and it's reasonable. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year and all permits to be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next item, item 21530 North Cranbrook Road. Is the applicant ready?
My name is Fred Capaldi. I'm here to represent Mr. Nolenberg. He is out of town this evening. We are requesting your permission to construct a cabana on the rear property. The cabana meets with all the requirements set by the township, and if there are any other, I guess you would say, requirements by the township or by the homeowners association, Mr. Nolenberg is more than willing to comply.
So the questions I had, could you go to the picture of the landscape plan? So I think there's a note that there's going to be hydrangeas removed and then replanted. Is any other screening planned than other than the relocation of the hydrangeas?
Yes, there are some other shrubs that will be removed on the north side, and per the requirements of the board or of the homeowners association, Mr. Nolenberg is prepared to install any kind of screening that is recommended.
So if we had a motion that said the structure would have to be screened to the height of the structure 12 months out of the year, that would be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Welcome back.
Thank you. Our board approved this, the structure. It is consistent with the architecture of the house as required by our architectural guidelines. It also meets our lot coverage requirements, which are more stringent than the township requirements. Our approval letter, which is probably in your packet, does include the requirement that it be fully and completely screened from neighbor and street view. That will require installation of a row of evergreens on that north lot line. There are existing evergreens there, but they're much too short to screen the structure. So the requirement is that it be fully and completely screened on the day that the trees go in, and the homeowner was willing to do that. Given that, we do support this request and recommend you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
Thank you so much.
In regard to the appeal at 1530 North Cranbrook Road, accessory structure I moved or request to be approved is submitted. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of property due to the fact that it's in the back of the house. It meets the setbacks, it meets the height, and it will also be screened 12 months out of the year. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreens plantings may be required or will be required to screen the pavilion from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the pavilion at the time of installation for 12 months of the year.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Are we just going to require screening along the north as suggested by the association or the entire, around the entire structure?
I think around the structure that's visible by public view.
Okay, which I think is the north. Okay.
In their report, they also identified from street and neighborhood view.
Okay. All right.
It's got to be screened from public view, and you'll take that. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So we're skipping item three, moving to item four, 1580 West Long Lake Road. Is the applicant ready?
I am Christine White, appearing on behalf of Mr. Newman and the Newman family at 1580 Long Lake. So we have two issues here. We have an existing fountain and an existing garden that is allegedly encroaching on a natural setback feature. As far as the existing fountain goes, it meets the requirements in terms of the distance between the canal and the neighbor and the road. And it's, you know, a water fountain, just something fun that the family really wants, and it's, you know, just a feature of the home. As far as the garden is concerned, I guess I have some questions on the natural setback feature rules and the ordinance. The garden itself is braised off the ground, so we're not using any of the existing soil from the land. We bought soil from Home Depot or Lowe's or wherever it is that we get soil from, so we didn't use any of the natural features from the land. I'm also a little confused as to, I know the ordinance says that a natural feature is a specific, you know, a wetland, a lake, and I'm losing the actual where it says that, what a natural water land is, but a canal is not one of those, and a canal is actually a man-made feature. So I guess I just would like some clarification on the difference between like the canal and it technically being connected to a lake, even though it's not one of the listed water features that are included in the natural setback language. And then also a little clarification as well as to the front yard versus, the side yard versus the backyard, because the way I look at the house, if we're looking, if the front yard is where the front door is, then technically this is still in the backyard and not in the front yard. But, you know, we are willing to work with the township and figure out, you know, a way to, you know, make this right. We didn't realize that a garden would be an issue. We have just vegetables. It's a vegetable garden. We put the fences up to stop the cranes. If anyone deals with cranes, we know how much they love the seeds and all of the plants, but put those up so that the cranes wouldn't come into the garden. And the owners of the home are funeral directors, so they, you know, they like to have more natural products because they deal with death a lot, and they know exactly what is going on in life, and they like to, you know, have their own fruits and vegetables, or at least their own vegetables. But we are willing to, you know, do what we can to work with the township board to make sure that, you know, we are in compliance here.
Thank you. Before we go through any of the items that you, any questions from the board? I'd like to open this up to the public. Does anyone here like to comment on this item? So I'll close the public hearing. So Patty, did you want to address some of the questions that?
Sure. In regard to the question about whether that canal, whoop, you just got me off. Whether the canal constitutes part of the waterway, water feature, and it does, as a definition within our ordinance and how it's been enforced, it is a waterway that is considered part of our network, if you will, and the natural feature setback is appropriate to address in this particular situation with the garden and the garden features that are within that 25-foot setback. It is considered a front yard because of the location of the property having frontage on Long Lake Road. It doesn't necessarily mean where the front door is, but it's actually the property having frontage on a right-of-way. And thirdly, your question?
About the soils.
Soil.
The soils are?
Oh, whether it was bringing soils in or that it was activity within the natural feature setback, the intention is it to be in its natural condition so that should there be any runoff on the property, that there's 25 feet of natural filtration so that before that water gets into the waterways, it has an opportunity to be filtered, if you will, and cleansed. And certainly to remove any obstructions within that 25 feet is intended so that we have that ability to filter or improve the quality of any runoff before it gets to our waterway. So in this instance, regarding her questions, we feel it's appropriate for the board to consider the variance requests that are before you.
All right, so board, how do we, you want to discuss this now? How do we feel about it? So first, sort of the natural features. Go ahead.
Is this, I mean, it looks like it's on their driveway, right?
The fountain.
Well, the garden and the fountain feature. Is it on, is it on your driveway?
Technically, it's on a landscaped area that was there when purchased. I don't know if it meets the definition of the driveway.
So it's down there on the right-hand side, bottom right-hand corner?
Yes.
Appears to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's a driveway there in, off a telegraph, or not telegraph, Long Lake, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So the driveway is up against the natural future setback, too?
That is correct.
Hard to tell from here, but?
But that, I mean, that was how it was when it was purchased.
That's an existing condition. That's not an addition, which is not being heard tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so if there's a setback of 25 feet, is this garden right at?
No.
No, it's within the 25.
It's within the 25.
It's completely within it, so you kind of see.
The fountain is in 25 feet, too.
It's about 10 feet from?
From the edge of the canal.
Yeah.
Yeah. See the red, sort of red line there? So it angles where the?
Trying to say that it's at this point?
Oh, yes.
At this point, it's 10 feet?
Yeah.
So the way this is constructed, is it the position of the township that this structure basically eliminates the opportunity for that filtration and that absorption to take place at the moment because of what's been constructed?
That's correct. I mean, admittedly, there is some existing impervious surface that is there, and this is just adding to that further impervious surface with the structures that are there and the, you know, the, not necessarily the plantings, but in addition to the plantings, it's also the fencing and so forth. It's intended to be in its natural state. Now, clearly, there's some intrusions with the asphalt, but the intent is not to then expand that intrusion unless seeking a variance from the ZBA.
And I guess when I looked at this one, I wasn't so concerned with the fountain because it's being placed on what's already basically a concrete area, right? But I am struggling with the garden, although I love gardens, just the, it's large and it's taking up a large part of that natural features area when we already have other areas in the site that have destroyed the natural features area, so.
What is the slope of the driveway?
It's pretty flat.
Is it pretty flat?
It's flat. There's no slope in the driveway. Well, I guess if we're looking at it, I guess I can use the?
Yeah.
So if you look like where it goes to the basement area, which is down like this part of the house, it doesn't necessarily like slope, but it creates a, like a ramp-ish way to get to the backyard. The homeowners' mothers both, well, one of them just passed away last November, but they were both living in the home, so getting in and out from the basement was the only way to get into the house for them. I guess I have another, so is it the fence that's the problem, or like would we have to?
It's an entire disturbance in that area.
Okay.
The whole encroachment.
Yeah.
Nothing is supposed to be constructed in there.
Okay.
Is this garden in the front? I'm still a little, is this?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I guess, yeah, this is the front.
So what's?
Right by the light.
What's between the edge of the garden then and the canal? Is that just?
Grass.
Grass, okay. So this was added, I'm assuming, to the edge of the driveway? So the driveway was there, and then this was, yeah, so that's, that's the point, is there's a further, because the driveway is, you know, encroaching. Now we've added to the encroachment with the garden, and there still is a bit of grass, as you said, or undisturbed natural features between the edge of the garden and the edge of the canal.
Yeah.
What is the base underneath the soil? Does it go directly into the ground there, or is there some sort of bottom to it?
I am not entirely sure on that.
I mean, it appears to me in the, in the picture here that these are plants planted into the ground unless it's in some sort of structure.
I thought she said it was a raised bed.
So there are raised, so?
There's a picture where you can see it right there.
Yeah, so there's like, some of it is raised, they have it.
So it's like impervious, or it is pervious, I should say.
Yes.
It's just surrounded by a fence.
Right.
Why did the owners decide to put it there?
I'm not sure, but if you'd like to speak with the owner, he's here. Is that okay?
Sure.
Sure, come on up. We need the facts.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Newman. I'm a resident at 1580 Long Lake. The reason is just a hobby, and the reason for the fence is to prevent large animal to come in. Plantation is a natural way, as I like what you said, and it's a way of hobby right now, nothing more than that. But we put the fence just to prevent the jumping of the animals or, you know?
But why there in the front yard?
In the front yard?
Why?
That's a side yard.
Well, why didn't you put it behind your house?
Water level, just to make advantage of the water level from the canal.
What?
Water level, like watering the area. It's much easier where it's closer to the water.
So do you have something that hooks into the water that irrigates it?
No, water level, like you don't have to, just the grass always is green because water level, like?
So it's better for the plants there in that location?
Correct. Just scientific issue.
Is there any other spot in your yard that would work that way?
I'm sorry?
Is there any other place in your yard that would be a good place for it?
Let's make an argument like this. If the vegetables plant is there without the fence, do you accept it?
I'm just asking you the questions. I'm trying to see if you have some sort of practical difficulty.
No, I don't have any other one right now, no. It's closer where we come to park the car and take a look and, you know, enjoy the view and cultivation of the vegetables.
I can understand your logic in that. Of course, I'm trying to see if there's some sort of practical difficulty as to why it's not in any other location.
Because the water runs all the way down the side of the house.
Right. Okay.
It's an organic, natural way of watering the plants.
So then I guess that question would be, would the variance of removing the fence solve the issue, or would it still be an issue?
Well, there's, there's still a disruption of the natural feature setback, even if you take out the fence.
So like even if we took out the actual garden and we planted flowers? I'm just trying to understand like what the differences are.
It's intended to be in its natural state, so it shouldn't be lawn area, it should be just a natural vegetation. That's not mowed, that's not fertilized, that's not planted within, it's just the natural state.
How about the grass?
Unless it was the natural grass.
It's not natural.
So that's the purpose and the intent.
Well, let's just hypothetically say if it were removed, what, what would?
They have to put native plantings in.
Okay.
Right. And is there like a list? What would native planting? I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm sorry, I really am.
No, we're trying to give you the best information we can.
Because like if we, if we take away the garden and we take away all of that, we still have grass there, and if we can't mow, are you saying we can't mow the grass either?
Cannot fertilize it?
Like it just overgrows, but then would that not cause some sort of visual, you know, someone not wanting to drive by even though they can't technically see it from the road anyway? But what, I guess if they can't take care of the lawn and cut it so that, I guess I just, I'm a little confused what?
Right, so I think the staff could give you examples and show you pictures of natural feature setback that would answer those questions. So a picture in this case would be worth 1,000 words, I think. There is a list of native plantings that could go in the area.
I think, just think it's worth saying just one more time about, because I'm just, I can see your brain still trying to process, but, you know, the whole idea is to keep it natural. That's what the whole point is, and so a natural means it's in its natural state, so grass isn't natural, you know, putting fertilizer chemicals and all of that is not natural. So what would naturally be there? And that's something that you can get assistance and help with. So, so it's not about if you removed it, you know, I know you're thinking, okay, now we want it to look nice, right? But it's because it's in a natural setback, it has to be the natural.
So just for the record, the plants in there are unnatural.
You're, here.
Because you continuously, natural.
Say that again?
Okay, what we have as the plants in there, they're natural.
That wasn't naturally what was there. You disrupted that area to put the garden there.
Normally, there would be planted vegetables there.
Yeah, what is meant by a natural features area is it's an area that you never touch. You allow it to stay in its natural state, whatever that natural state is, okay? You touched it, you altered it. That's the difference. Yes, all plants are natural, but you altered what was the natural state, and in that 25-foot area, it is supposed to remain natural. You're not supposed to go in there. That's the difference.
That's the ordinance.
So, so any other discussion? Do you think we can have a motion at this point? I think to bring it to a close?
I mean, should we talk about the fountain?
Well, I think the fountain is. Yeah, I prepared to make a motion on the fountain.
Yeah, let's do that.
With respect to the property located at 1580 West Long Lake Road, for a permission re- request for an existing fountain, I would move that that request be approved because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The particular structure is compatible with adjoining properties. It's seen in a lot of properties in the township, and it's not objectionable to any of the adjoining properties. I would also move to grant the request for the dimensional variance for the fountain to encroach into the natural feature setback area because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Now, this is a little bit unique, but I think to the extent that there was already an encroachment on this property with all the, the concrete for the existing driveway, this fountain has simply been placed on top of that, so it does not really create any further impact on the environmental setback. And for that reason, I think that's unique and it will not be an injustice to the adjoining properties, and I don't believe that's been self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within five days for the existing fountain, and I'm not going to require any screening on the fountain.
I have a motion and support any discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your, the request for the fountain has been granted. So, is anyone ready to make a motion on the garden?
I'll make a motion. And regards to the appeal at 1580 West Long Lake Road for the dimensional variance, actually, I guess for the permission, individual variance for the garden, existing garden encroaching into the national feature setback. I guess I have to do a permission in a dimensional variance or just a dimensional?
It'd be permission, actually.
Okay.
If you deny the permission, then no.
With the permission, you don't have to go to the second level of a dimensional variance.
Okay, thank you. So let me start over with the permission request for the existing garden encroaching into the national feature setback. In regards to the appeal at 1580 West Long Lake Road, I move that the request be denied as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did not demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will hinder or discourage the adjacent, will hinder the natural appropriateness of a natural set feature and the exceptional, the accessory structure is objectional because it is encroaching into that natural set feature. So with that, with the motion being denied, the existing garden must be removed and the area must be restored within 30 days of the approval of the meeting minutes.
I have a motion and to support any discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
We have one. Do you want to do a roll call?
Sure. O'Donnell?
No.
Ford?
Yes.
Giogrande?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Rosati?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one.
Could we ask not for 30 days? A little bit longer?
It's 30 days from the approval of the minutes, so technically it's 60 days.
It's really, it's 60 days.
It's not 30 days from today.
30 days from the approval of the minutes, so not, after next month's meeting, it'd be another 30 days. So technically 60 pretty much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
So we are skipping item five since it's been postponed, going to item six, 1375 scenic court. See applicant ready?
Good evening, guys. Todd and Pauline Stamper, 1375 scenic court. We're seeking approval. I don't know if you guys go or do I just go?
Go.
All right, thanks. Unfortunately, I'm doing a lot of this work myself, so in the very beginning, when I came to see you guys about the 10-foot-high wall on the side, we did have the fireplace on one of the prints. And actually, how it got on there is when I poured a rear yard patio, we put the footing in for it, and one of the inspectors said, hey, if you're putting a pizza oven, make sure you go in front of the ZBA, we added it. Well, because we did work in the right of way, we gave prints to Oakland County Road Commission, and then we had to take a bunch of stuff off, and it was a complete debacle, and it's my fault. I wasn't trying to hide it. There's no hiding this thing. So it wasn't like I was trying to sneak around. Plus, I've been in front of you guys two times. So the pizza oven is 20 feet high, but that's because the, the fireplace itself is so big that you have to have a certain-sized chimney for it to properly flue, otherwise the fire will smoke and it'll just sometimes burn out. There is an awning structure on the right and the left that are going on there that comes out about 15 or so feet. The inspector, when he did stop by to let me know about the ZBA, he did put a stop work order on it, but it's pretty much where it was. It was already done. I didn't really have anything to finish outside of the awnings. I have not done the rest of the steel structure. So the roof height is probably around 16 feet. I can't see that far, but it is a little bit higher than required. I back up to the woods. I don't have any neighbors on the backside. The Dumars live to the left, they can't see it, their house is elevated, and I don't have anybody really, Echo Road goes across my house. So it's pretty, pretty secluded. You can, if you flip back to the other pictures, you should be able to see it. Right there, that one right there. So if you look down that wood line, that's kind of where the fireplace is, way in the back behind my house. We're also up for the gate on my roadway. This was, again, a little bit of confusion. I didn't know I needed ZBA to put a gate on a private road because we're, when we finally get the neighbor's approval, the actual gate we are going to be putting on scenic court, I was told I don't need ZBA approval for that, but I needed ZBA approval for this one. So I was a little confused on it.
Right.
So I built those pillars with full thinking that as long as you had, if you go back to that drawing of the road, yeah, there you go. So that's actually the entrance into Echo. So when I had found out that, prior to this, that we didn't need ZBA approval for that, you just needed Dumars and the, and the other neighbor's approval, which we're working through right now, I just assumed I didn't need one for another private road. So again, apologies. Obviously, as you can see, really nothing to try and hide or pull any wool, wasn't trying to do any of that.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
So apparently, the three of you decided you're going to gate the road, right?
We have 2.75% of it. Mrs. Chu is here tonight. She has some concerns just because she receives a lot of deliveries, so we're just making sure functionality, that when Amazon shows up a lot, that they'll be able to get in.
I just, I'm wondering why if the, now the road, if the court's going to be gated, why you need a gate on your driveway as well?
Because that's my exit. My garages are on that side, if you go to the overview. So that is my turnaround. But you can't see it from there.
But I mean, your, your driveway comes out onto, onto the court.
My driveway goes from right here, it exit, it exits out right here now into this area.
Right.
And then there's also my exits right here. So the driveway comes through between both garages and then comes in front of the house and out. And I, I want the gate because I don't want people, and there's multiple gates on Echo Road. I wouldn't be the first person. There's a ton of houses that have gates.
I know, I lived there for years, so I know your property.
Oh, good, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm just, so you're going to, the court, though, is going to be gated at Echo Road, right?
It, it may be. It depends on if we can get the one neighbor comfortable with her ability to get deliveries. Regardless, even if that was gated, right now, I have people that drive up that. And since we've redone the asphalt, I actually had a...
So you, you have an access now out...
I'm right here.
Back.
So I go like this. Yep.
Okay, that wasn't there before, right?
Correct. This is not here anymore.
Okay.
So this goes out like that.
All right, now I understand because that's, you know, I, I lived there for years and that's not what I remember it being.
Sure, sure. Yeah, if you go to the, the pictures of the front of the home, you can see the work that you guys approved already. I think it turned out amazing.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, okay.
So you can see to the right there where it exits, and we kind of can do it like a drive-through. So that, I believe, should cover the, the gate along the fence line, along Echo. It's just to maintain the beauty of the, of the house and the design. The fence poles, they look like the two poles there. They have the, the beautiful aluminum wrap on them, and then you can see the gate style or the fence style. And what we're trying to do is, we, we just get a lot of visitors, a lot.
Is this the fence down?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the gate, yep, and that's the fence style. So we, we get a lot of visitors that come through. Kids will cut through, they're playing hockey. We had somebody drop their kids off because we just redid the asphalt on Echo, so they're skateboarding. I mean, Mrs. Chu, Mrs. Chu's here right now, she can tell you, we get a lot of people down that road. I have actually had people drive around my driveway to come out to the Echo side. But Dumars are in full with everything we're doing. I believe Mrs. Chu is good with everything we're doing outside of the, we have to make sure that the gate going onto Echo, that there is always access for her to get her deliveries. That's what I know as of today.
Emergency vehicles?
We're also proposing...
So you covered the pizza oven, the driveway gate, can you talk?
Yeah, that's, yeah. I'm sorry?
Can you talk a little bit? So you covered the pizza oven?
Yep.
The driveway gate. Just talk a little bit more about the six-foot-high fence?
Yeah, so understanding the, the code most, in most townships and cities, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you're in a subdivision, you don't want a six-foot-high fence next to your neighbor if you have multiple houses in a row. With the size of the house and how it's elevated, a four-foot fence is going to, I think, would kind of look just silly. You would lose it. It would be really low to the ground. There's multiple trees in that area. The elevation of the house is 10 foot higher, well, probably at that point, maybe 14 or 15 feet higher. So we just, we moved it up to six foot just to make it look more in comparison with the size of the house and that property.
And, and that fence is going to have illuminated piers?
Yeah, they're very, very dull. It's not like, I can't remember if it's on...
Is the light, is it down lighting?
No, it's the kind that kind of, like that light right there, it just pushes against the wall itself. So there's no, no distraction to drivers. It's, it's really soft.
Any other questions from the board? Do you have anything else you'd like to add? So I'm going to open it to the public. All right, I'd like to open this for public comment. I'd like to come up and speak.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Rafeal Sepica. Lived on Hidden Lake Drive, which my wife built for 30 years.
Address?
1239 Hidden Lake Drive off of Echo. I've been asked to represent the Chu's by Mr. Stanley Chu, who was called away on business and was unable to attend tonight. They're asking for a postponement on a decision for the scenic court gate. The reason being, their custom-built home was built in 1998.
So wait a minute, we're not discussing this?
That's correct. The only gate on the agenda this evening is the one off Echo Road that's on his private property.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not discussing it.
They're not discussing the one entering scenic court. They are opposed to that. They have a severely handicapped son who's wheelchair-bound on, he has a tracheostomy, and they get all kinds of medical supplies on a daily basis. And they are extremely anxious and afraid because of that. And that was what I was asked to represent. Excuse me?
That won't come before us.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
4450 Echo.
4450?
Yes.
So your name is?
Otso Camello. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
The zoning board of appeals. I'm doing this because I'm just a resident of Echo Road. And I ask, I kindly ask you to deny the request to approve the accessory structures proposed by 1375 scenic court. And I'm doing that in order of appearance on the request. Echo Road is a natural beauty road, and the six-foot-high fence with 10 8.5-foot tall brick structures as proposed would impede on the character of the road. This fence is supposedly blocking the view from the road and deterring TikTok crowd, I read the letter. But if the natural foliage that was there before this project started was untouched, there would be nothing to look at. So this topography was self-created. Besides, if the garage and renewed front yard facing Echo Road would have been, and I quote from the approval request on May 14, "in harmony with the existing structures in the area and preserving the aesthetics and character of the neighborhood," this was specifically stated, "there would be nothing to look at." Then the driveway gate, with two 42-inch by 42-inch by eight-and-a-half-foot high pillars, I understand this was already addressed, would equally impede on the character of the road. In fact, it already does. On top of that, that drive gate is now located on Echo Road, which wasn't there before. It's never been approved, has never been requested for. The request was for the retaining wall that would be up to 10 feet high, not for an extension of the driveway that is now on top of it facing Echo Road, which was never the case either. I wonder where the approval is from the ZBA on that one. Concerning the existing pizza oven, and I want to expressly state this, that I value everyone's freedom and the freedom to do what they want as long as it's within the law. So I have nothing against a pizza oven. I do, however, believe that what was stated in the original request, and this is maybe more representative of what else was going on, that there was never a fireplace to begin with, and the request states that this is a rebuild of an existing fireplace. There was no fireplace in that spot, especially not one that's 28 feet tall. The, the thing's is 28 feet.
So you're just supposed to adjust your comments to us, then the applicant can speak, so let's not have the applicant speak.
Thank you very much.
And just continue to talk to us.
So my point being, if the requestor had left the trees and foliage, had kept the driveway layout the same as it was, had actually harmonized the garage with the existing structure and aesthetics and character of the neighborhood, there would have been no need for a fence, no need for a driveway gate on Echo Road. The fact that people stop and look on a public road is because of the enormous disruption, this megalomaniac project, because this lasted for months and months and months, cars through the road, and resulted in openness that now needs to be fixed with a fence. It clearly was for us all to see, except now a fence needs to be installed. Echo Road is still damaged, wildlife is disrupted, shrubs are still trying to recover, driveway opens now on Echo Road, as I mentioned. The, the pizza oven is still within six feet of the property line. It feels like the requestor does not respect the ZBA until the ZBA stands up and says enough is enough. The fact that someone is famous, I read this also, or owns a company, doesn't put a target on your back. If that was the case, Aretha Franklin, who lived on scenic court, would have put a fence up years ago. And to conclude, from the Road Commission of Oakland County, a natural beauty road should preferably have no development along them. But such development as exists at the time the road is designated should be compatible with the surroundings and should not retract from the natural, unspoiled character and visual impact of the road area. I don't think that that is the case right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
Hi, Michael Updahl, 1381 Echo Lane. For those of us who have lived on Echo Road for 10-plus years, we moved there because it was a very special place. There is a natural beauty, and the natural beauty road that was designated was not designed to be desecrated. I'm all in favor of letting people do what they want to do on their own property as long as they follow the rules. I've walked past his house twice a day for the last seven years. There was no fireplace in the back. There was nothing to tear down and improve. He did this on his own volition without permission, and now he's coming to you and begging forgiveness instead of asking permission, which he would never would have gotten. We just heard the previous applicant be turned down for a small garden... We just heard the previous applicant be turned down for a small garden in their driveway. Yet, if you look at the fencing, if you please click to the fence that he is wanting to put up on Echo Road, there is no need for a fence there. You've already approved a 10-foot-high retaining wall, which is directly against everything that every architectural design has on Echo Road, much less the Natural Beauty Road. You allowed that to happen. Fine, it's his property, he can do what he will. But he created this problem. There's not a million TikTokers going down Echo Ryan. Okay? Let's just keep, let's keep that in perspective. There's not a million guys driving through his driveway. There's a few hundred cars go down Echo Road every single day. Yet, he is going to single-handedly destroy, destroy the aesthetics, which he's already done a pretty good job of, destroy the aesthetics of a Michigan Natural Beauty Road by you allowing him to put up an illuminated fence, which he does not need. The fireplace in the back, all for pizza ovens, as Hansa said. However, again, didn't apply for it, simply threw it up there and said, "I'm gonna do what I want to do." The pillars in his driveway were built there because he knew he would come to you and say, "I want a gate." I'm just gonna ask you, as the board, are you going to allow everyone who wants to do what they want to do, come and beg forgiveness? Because that's what's happening here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Richard Kulis. I live at 4820 Echo Road, the parcel directly south of Scenic Court. And I've lived there since 1975. It's a pristine, idealized spot to be fortunate to live in. I was quite shocked with some of the things that occurred. I assumed that the removal of several of the trees along a natural beauty road, which I thought were to be preserved, were removed. The pillars being placed, I have a gate entrance at my driveway. It's up about 60 or 80 feet from the roadway, and it's four feet high. This appears to be up close and personal to the road with massive pillars. Also, fencing, I just have no idea who we're trying to keep out. I mean, the construction itself, by way, looks like somewhat of a fortress-type of environment, literally, that will be hard to navigate for anyone wanting to gain entrance, I think. And the lighting, of course, probably for evening or night would be also, I think, a major distraction. Unfortunately, I don't know my new neighbor, and I feel like I, my prior neighbors also expressed their idea that, well, a man can do what he wants to do. But I don't know how much of this was approved and advanced. I really didn't know how the county treated the Echo Road beautification, beauty road type of situation with removal of so much foliage and removal of trees. But the end result is it's quite a shocking appearance for what we've been used to on Echo Road and what many people walk the road to enjoy the aesthetics and the quietness of that special spot. The other thought is, is the pizza oven. I'm hoping it's not including a drive-through or anything. But the, it's quite massive. I don't know how that can be. I noticed that there was some type of a structure that was gonna be a, take a shelter-type-of-roofing-type-of-thing that was going to be. And I don't know what to say to that other than it just doesn't seem in character unless you're going to kind of camouflage it some way with some permanent, very large foliage, you know? And so I always took the approach over the years that, when I had dealings with the zoning board of appeals, that I usually came here first and found out if my thoughts were going to be compatible with the environment. And so there's a couple times I was advised to quietly sit down and we're just not gonna have that sort of thing. And there's been other times when I've been approved. So I don't know what to say, because it's hard to reverse some things that have been done. And I, it's hard for me to hear, stand here and say, "Well, okay, you're my neighbor and I'm against what you're doing." But it's already been done, most of it. So I think it runs contrary to what most people would think of as the usual course of events. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You already spoke.
Hi, 4820 Echo Road. We're together. Anyway.
I'm sorry, your name is?
I agree with the other people.
No, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Oh, Victoria Kulis.
Okay.
I totally agree with the other speakers that were here that gave their rendition first, and my husband, of course. But there are a couple items that concern me that are a little bit different, that there's, and I don't know who's in charge, but there's been a deviation of the waterfall on the road, and I'm not sure who's in charge of that over the years. But I know they put some rocks aesthetic, tried to make it aesthetic and put some rocks on, and that, so, but the water coming, it's coming from the court beyond, all the way through his property, all the way into our, we have a pond on that side, and so it's coming through. So the water's been deviated, so there's more water going into our pond. And if anybody's fertilizing or whatever, we have a well, and it would affect our well water too with the fertilizer in the ponds, because we have well, but we don't have city water. And so we're concerned about maybe that type of thing, the fertilizer going through into the pond and upsetting our water health. The other thing that wasn't mentioned either is that the, our boundary marker line post that is marking these, where the survey was put up years ago, is now out and leaning against a tree. And so I'm not sure if we need a new survey to replace it or how that works.
So we're talking about a variance request for the six-foot-high fence, the driveway gate, and the existing pizza oven? So those are the three things?
Yeah, I know, but these things, I said they were additional things that concerned me, other than what we have talked about, the...
We're voting on those three things, so...
Okay, so how do you do the other things?
So you can talk to the staff after the meeting.
Okay.
We're a zoning board addressing those three.
Right, okay. I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that there were a couple other items.
All right, I just want to let you know that those are the three things that we're voting on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, so, 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 do you want to come forward, give your name and address? So you've already spoken, so, yeah, so you can't speak again. So did you want to speak? So, 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 no, you're done. Did you want to speak?
Oh, okay.
Yep. Oh, so you can go out to the microphone, give us your name and address? Nope, no, over here. That's where everybody else was.
Lydia Grabahovek, that lives right across from Scenic Court, off of Echo Road.
Address?
So your address is?
4760 West Wickford.
Okay.
For months and months and months, we experienced and lived through excruciating production of revamping something that was on the way to destroy the nature road. My daughter pulled out something from the Road Commission of Oakland County. The goal of Natural Beauty Road program is to preserve in a naturally, essentially, undisturbed condition certain county-local roads having outstanding or unusual natural beauty by virtue of native vegetation and/or other natural features within or associated with the right-of-way. So what we witnessed through all of this is also destruction of this nature beauty road. And secondly, the constant violation through process of construction.
But what we're talking, we're just a zoning board. We're voting on the six-foot-high fence, the driveway gate, and the existing pizza oven. So those are the only things that we're voting on tonight. So we're not talking about the construction or trees or...
My apologies, and I'm happy you reminded me. We can see the pizza oven from my home, from our terrace. It is huge. It, for a moment, as the gentleman said, you think it's something commercial for drive-ins. And the destruction of the trees prior to that, open not only that, but when the garage was being built, the one on second level with a glass door, now we see there are no trees, now we see the cars and hear all the revving and testing of the cars. Not only the violation during the construction was also excruciating. So the third thing that also is disturbing from the vantage point where we are at, we can see through the family room sitting down the lights that are commercial lights. They're too strong, too disturbing. So that, we strongly object to those lights and also to the fact that the construction, I must say, is always before time and after time, and the vegetation that was there destroyed what, and took away the pleasure of going to Nature Trail and take a walk. So the fence would be no need if everything was respected and preserved. And again, I say, repeat what somebody said, first ask for permission, first clarify, no apologies afterwards. So we would appreciate if the lights are removed or diminished or muted or whatever. And if there is a need for fence, we would like to specifically see what kind and if that would, you know, be in objection with what is at view.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that hasn't spoken? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back. I'm sorry, is there someone on the back?
This mic here?
Yes.
That's the one.
Hi, I'm Joe Nemeth. I live on Echo Lane 1424 Echo Lane, which is adjacent to this area. I don't quite understand how one, he hasn't, there can be a driveway on Echo Road and another driveway on Scenic Court.
But we're not discussing...
I understand that. I just don't know if there was ever approval for a drive, two driveways on two different streets. Seems unreasonable.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? So I'm gonna close the public hearing and let the applicant respond to the public comment.
Sure, thank you. Pursuant to the Oakland County Road Commission, and I've dealt with them, I've pulled two separate permits for the right-of-way for the driveway going up. I have a meeting with the township on that driveway. As far as the beauty road goes, there seems to be a lot of confusion on what this act means and what it is. I'll take this right from the Oakland County Road Commission's page. The Natural Beauty Road Act does not restrict the activities of frontage property owners. That means it does not restrict additional development on property adjacent to the road. It also does not prohibit the paving of the road, though it does require that a public hearing be conducted before it can be paved, and that is Echo Road. So if the township or everybody got together and said, "Hey, we want to assess everyone and pave Echo Road," then we would have to come in. And it's also been brought to my attention that in reviewing the Natural Beauty Act, that...
So I understand a lot of people talked about the Natural Beauty Act.
Sure.
We're just voting on the six-foot-high fence?
Understandably. I just wanted to...
The driveway gate and the pizza oven.
I've done a lot of research on it. I just wanted to do that. As far as the pizza oven goes, the young lady that just spoke, if I'm correct, I think, I'm not quite sure where she said she lived, but I don't really have any neighbors that are, besides, that are on the other subdivision, on the other side of Echo Road where there's trees, that are within 600, 700 feet of my house. So I think a lot of discretion tonight was things that were already approved. If you go to the one shot from Echo Road where it shows the pillars, I'm not sure with that elevation and when the foliage grows in the driveway in the corner that's all been planted, how anybody can see it. As far as not having a pizza oven, I bought the house in 2018. That was all woods. My wife and I cook pizzas back there. It's not that pizza oven, but we used to have a fire pit there. I'm not gonna argue that, that's fine. And what started this whole project, so you guys know, and I'm glad that the one lady had mentioned the drainage, multiple times, there's an indoor pool in the back of that house, and when all that woods was there, the neighbors down the way will pump their ponds out onto Echo Road, so closer to Long Lake. Anytime we have any rains or heavy floods, that would all flood back up and go in my pool. That's what started all this. It wasn't a plan one day where I'm like, "Oh, I'm gonna build this." It just kind of evolved into it. So we went to the Road Commission, got permission to clean out the ditch and to get the trees and clean those trees out. The fence line itself is not in the Natural Beauty Road, it's on my property, it's not an easement. Everything is in line with the setbacks, and there's been engineering on everything that's been done, and it's been provided to the city. So I think that would be my only response. I don't want to see anybody upset. It's unfortunate that as they walk by my house, they might not like it now, but you know what? Teacher's his own, I guess.
Are there questions from the board or the applicant or anything?
I would just like to clarify that there are remaining permits that are still necessary with this project, as well as still remaining approvals from the Road Commission regarding this project.
Regarding the fencing and the pizza oven and the pillars, there would, the open permit is with the township. The township is waiting for the Road Commission to give me my right-of-way permit, which I've pulled twice, and that's the meeting we're waiting on to have with the township and the Road Commission. Right-of-way permits for approaches are pretty common, so we don't necessarily foresee anything since I've pulled the permit with them twice over the last two years.
I have a question.
Please ask.
Would you be open to screening your fire pit from view from the neighbor that lives across Echo Road?
So the picture we're looking at right now, I believe, that she lives behind the woods on the other side in the other subdivision. So if she's on her second story looking through her trees and in my backyard, I certainly can, I'd be open to do anything that would make anybody happy. Yeah, I mean, there's foliage on the top of the driveway that will grow, yeah.
If you're open to putting in some screening?
Sure, absolutely.
Between your pizza oven and her view?
Yeah, I would have to understand, I believe her house is, staring here is probably down a little bit further.
Or better yet.
Yeah, I don't know.
Not from necessarily an unknown area, but how about from public view on the road there?
Yes, yeah, so on the side of the driveway to the left, there's a 10-foot gap.
It's public view, it's somebody driving down your road.
Would you be open to that?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Is, that's all I want to know right now.
Sure.
Anybody else?
I don't know how people feel, so I'll take a stab at things here. All right, I'm gonna start with...
You want to do them one at a time?
Yeah, I'm gonna run through them. With respect to the property located at 1375 Scenic Court, the permission request for the existing pizza oven and fireplace, I would move to approve that request because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The structure is not incompatible for the area, it's appropriate for the neighborhood, and it will not hinder adjacent properties. If this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within five days for the existing pizza oven and fireplace, and additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen that structure from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the accessory structures at the time of planting for 12 months of the year.
Do I have a second? So I have motion support, any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That request is granted. No, we're voting. No, we're voting.
With respect to the property located at 1375 Scenic Court, I'll start with the permission request for the fence and driveway gate, I would move that that request be denied because, don't do that, people, because the proposed structures are not compatible for the surrounding area. That area is very natural in state, and I think it does have a negative impact and would be inconsistent with what exists in that area. Accordingly, I would add to that motion that the existing piers would be removed 30 days after approval of the meeting minutes.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That request is denied.
I can just clarify, in both instances, you are addressing just permission requests only?
Correct. Correct, because there's no need, well, there wasn't a dimensional for the.
The height of the pizza oven.
Yeah. Oh, it's not shown in the notes. Okay, no, so I will address the height of that as well.
And the setbacks too.
That's not in any of the notes.
Yeah, I don't see that.
The setback is accurate.
We're good on setbacks.
Okay, all right, so I would also move on 1375 Scenic Court to grant the request for the dimensional variance for the existing pizza oven and fireplace because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty due to the unique nature of the property and the location of the home on that site. There would be no injustice to the neighbors, and like I stated, there are some unique circumstances about that property which results in the location of that structure in that area, and it's not self-created. And same thing, you'll have to get your permits, etc., in plantings.
Sure.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? So this is the second part of the.
First motion.
Pizza oven, just so we're clear.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The second half of the pizza oven request is granted.
I believe that's it.
That addresses everything.
Thank you, appreciate it, guys.
Thanks.
So calling next item. Item seven, 7313 Brookside Village Court. Is the applicant ready? Is he or she here? Item seven.
I'll move to table that to the end of the meeting.
Motion and support to table item seven to the end of the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you could take your conversation outside, please.
Please.
The two gentlemen in the back. Sir, we still have business to conduct. So calling item eight, 1196 Stuyvesant Road. Is the applicant ready?
Okay, good evening, my name is Ivan Katz, I'm with Great Lakes Landscape Design. I'm here representing Jason and Erica Goldis at 1196 Stuyvesant. We were contacted by the Goldis family to provide them with a landscape design to enhance their home. They've been here for eight years, they have three kids, and they're raising their family, so they're looking to update the outside of the house now. We're seeking approval to replace this existing wall that is failing. It's a retaining wall located at the north side yard.
Just a minute, hang on a minute. Ladies?
You're going to have to leave.
Ladies?
Hello?
Gavel.
You're disrupting our meeting, please leave. I apologize for the interruption.
No problem.
Please continue.
Okay, so as you can see, we have a current fieldstone retaining wall that is in different states of disrepair. We're seeking approval to replace that wall. We need to get the variance because of the proximity to the setbacks. Currently, all areas are screened by evergreens on that property, non-visible to any of the neighbors, and we just completed some additional screening along the north property line.
Yeah, sir, you can't shut those doors, unfortunately. You have to.
No, yeah, they're not locked.
But they have to be open for the opening, and they're supposed to be open.
Now they're open.
Who's in charge of this meeting? This is out of control.
It is out of control. I think the people out of the foyer are in charge.
Run zoning board meeting.
They just have one door open.
What's going on? Okay, I apologize again, I'm sorry.
Understood. So I think I've gotten everything out there, there's photos in here, there's a, I believe we sent in a copy of all the designs and elevations requested.
You're just replacing the existing wall?
We're replacing the existing wall, yeah.
Okay.
The materials, it's going to be a concrete poured-in-place wall, so this is not going to be anything that will need to be replaced in any of our lifetimes.
That's good work. I'd like to open the public hearing on this. Anyone like to speak on item eight? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
So, this is the permission request. I move that the appeal at 1196 Stuyvesant Road for the accessory structure, I move that it be approved or submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of this accessory structure or retaining wall is appropriate with the neighborhood, and it is really just a replacement. And then I'm going to tack on the motion for the dimensional variance. I move in regard to the appeal, again, at the same address of 1196 Stuyvesant Road, for the dimensional variance is required for the retaining wall being located less than two feet from the property line and being greater than two feet in height at the lot line. I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the severe topography of the lot. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the fact that this is actually screened by evergreen plantings. The unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the topography, and this is not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year for proposed retaining wall, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And I am going to include additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the retaining walls from public view, and if so, must meet or exceed the height of the retaining walls at the time of planting for a period of 12 months.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item nine, 5534 Pine Brook.
Good evening, my name's Eric Rursundy, I live at 5534 Pine Brook Courts, my first time here, quite an education. I bought a.
We want to make your time here worthwhile.
I may come again for entertainment, but anyway. Within the last year and a half, I bought a new condo out of an 18-unit condo development, and there was a five-foot-high fence that ran from my property up against the abutment of an office building. The fence was rickety and old, and I tore it down. The condo manager and development would like the fence put back up. I'd like the fence put back up for privacy, and my request for deviation is put back a five-foot fence that was there, so my request is to make it one foot higher. And the fence, even though it would be one foot higher, has a see-through pass lattice on the top. The total distance that the fence covers is only about 20 feet. Not only do I have permission from the condo association, the office building that I abut next to also is in support of the fence. I have no neighbors, I'm at the corner of the condo development. All there are are office buildings to the west of me and to the north of me, and that's my request.
Questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
In regards to the appeal at 5534 Pine Brook Court for the proposed fence exceeding four feet in height, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Basically, because not to have the fence, it would prevent the reasonable use of the property in terms of privacy and security. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. For one, it was approved by the adjoining neighbors, or they had their support for it from the office complex as well as the association. The unique circumstances with the property, because it's a condo and things are very close together, and also there was a fence there before that is actually just being replaced at a little higher. And this is not self-created. With that, if approved, the motion also includes all applications for necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. The finished side of the fence must face the exterior, and additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the fence from public view, and that screening has to meet or exceed the height of the fence at the time of planting, and they have to screen it 12 months of the year.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome to come back, too.
Item 10, 290 East Berkshire. Good evening.
Good evening, I am Franklin Woodman, I live at 290 East Berkshire Road. I am here just looking for approval for a shed. Everything off the fence line meets the requirements. It's already, as you can see, it's already put together, they just bring it in and drop it off, and it's going to go to the right of the garage, probably about 10 feet off the garage.
Any questions from the board?
What kind of trees are back there?
It's a mixture, it's just, it's a pretty wide tree line. That tree line right there that you're looking at, it's probably 15, 16 feet deep before the fence line, and it's a mixture. It's kind of open back there, too.
Okay. Would it be able to be visible to those homes behind? Not during the winter?
During the winter, maybe, but.
Okay.
My property is completely tree-lined, I'm on the corner, as you can see, so there's nobody on Traymore side. I have a tree line between me and 278, so the only people, I mean, during the wintertime, they might be able to see it, but I don't see it being a hinder to anything.
I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public hearing, bring it back for the board to discuss or a motion.
Can you see the picture of the shed again? I saw it quickly. Okay. And that's the proposed shed that you're?
Yes.
That colored, it's black?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
Please do.
In regards to the appeal at 290 East Berkshire Road for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved or submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of accessory structures is appropriate to the neighborhood as it meets setbacks, it's in the rear of the property, and it will be screened from public view. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the shed from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time of planting for 12 months of the year, especially in the wintertime.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Calling item 11, 600 Pine Valley Way. Is the applicant ready?
Good evening, my name is Shannon Moore, I'm with Zerumba and Company, here tonight with John Locker, address is 600 Pine Valley Way. So, a few noteworthy characteristics about the house and the property I'd like to share is that the house was built in 1968, and it was designed by the late Don Paul Young of Young &amp; Young Architects. And Mr. Locker purchased the house in 2023 and is currently updating and renovating the house interior and exterior with Young &amp; Young as well. The house is really unique and is a gem of a piece of architecture, and it's sitting up on a knoll, so there's quite a bit of topography. But one thing that's worth noting about the actual site itself is the lot, it's existing non-conforming, and the shape of the lot you can see is quite unique, but it presents challenges to create outdoor living spaces. And so, one of the things that is challenging about that is because the back of the house and the garage is around 16 feet from the property line, and so on the rear setback line, you can actually kind of see the dashed black line. It would not allow for patio seating areas and would be challenging to get anything to fit in there properly, so it's designed.
About a pointer.
Yeah, that would be great, actually. So, there's the setback line, the rear setback line, and we're proposing a patio that has like a piece of furniture, really. It's a fire table that's natural gas that gets connected in, and so we've got a seating area. One of the beautiful things about the renovation of the house is a wall has been opened up to create views. When you come into the house, it's all glass, and so you get these beautiful lines into the garden spaces, and so we are requesting a very small water feature that picks up on some of the detailing of the home's chimney. We are planting the buffer area along the fence, we're planting 10 to 12-foot-high evergreens. These larger trees are 18-foot evergreens, so we're trying to create as much privacy as we can. We don't believe that you'll ever be able to see the fire table or this little water feature other than when you enter in through the front door. One other item that's on the docket tonight that we're requesting permission for is a fence for their dog. They have a 165-pound Great Dane, so we're requesting a four-foot fence. And so, we've tried to position the fence, this is actually, there's a wing wall of the existing garage that, it's tucked up behind, so you really can't see this because of the grade change and the architecture. And there's an existing fence, wood fence, that kind of runs the property line along the back that we're tying into here, so this is not visible. And then up in here, this is also not visible based on the grade change, and the only part that is visible, we're putting three 18-foot evergreens to screen that, and then if you can see those dots, that's actually, those are existing mature, this is all wooded. So we're kind of trying to bury the rest of the fence into the wood line, so, and this is a cul-de-sac, so it really won't be visible from the road. We also are repairing retaining walls, I think that was submitted, but.
You guys have removed that.
Yeah.
We fixed that. We didn't realize we were too close to the property line, so we made that adjustment and resubmitted that. So this got pulled back.
Any questions from the board? So, did I hear you write that the fence is for a Great Dane?
A Great Dane, yeah, 165-pound Great Dane, yes.
And how tall is the fence?
Four feet, per the ordinance.
That's the first time I've heard anybody ask for a four-foot fence for 165-pound Great Dane.
The dog can put his head on the fence.
Yeah, he'll rest his chin.
So use it to scratch his lower part of his leg. So any other questions? I'll open this up for the public. Close public hearing, bring it back for discussion. Motion.
That's a big dog.
All right. With respect to the...
Are you going?
Go ahead.
This is an exciting motion, fighting, fighting for it.
It's exciting. You want to do it?
Should I flip it over?
Nope, you can do it.
Okay, Carol. You got a roll, Carol.
With respect to the property located at 600 Pine Valley Way, I would move to grant the permission request for the dog enclosure fence, fire table, water feature, and water feature because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards.
You mean to include the landscape wall as well?
They removed that.
They removed that.
Oh, I misspoke, sorry.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so, okay. All right. So, the structures are compatible with adjoining properties, are appropriate for the neighborhood, and harmonious with the neighborhood, and will not have any impact on the neighbors. With respect to dimensional variances for those items, I would move that they be approved because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with, or has demonstrated practical difficulty. The practical difficulty is as a result of the very, very unique shape of that lot, which, and the existing placement of the home, which makes it very difficult to work around to have any area to actually have anything in your yard. And because of that, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome. There's no injustice to the neighbors by reason of these difficulties with that, and the location of this property won't negatively impact the properties around, and the unique circumstances I've just described, and these are not self-created. If this is approved, application for all permits must be made within one year for the fence, fire table, and water feature, and additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the dog fence and accessory structures from public view. Now, to the extent that you have a landscape plan that appears it's going to screen it, as long as it screens it fine. If not, if you have some other areas, I want you to put some additional plantings in.
Support?
Motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, calling item 12, 1526 Winthrop.
Hello.
Good evening.
I was not expecting to talk. I thought my contractor would be here. He's not, so apologies. So, essentially, to my request here, it says to relocate, but what ended up happening was we ended up having to move the pool equipment to the back of the yard because of an existing septic field that we had to work our way around, and there was already existing power back there. I truthfully wasn't aware that it wasn't approved until the final inspection. I thought my contractor had already got that part approved. The reason we had to go around the house is because the back house, back part of the house is on a slab, so we couldn't go under. And then, obviously, like I said, the septic field, where, in that picture, you can see it's green where the septic field is, for obvious reasons. So, yeah, we're just hoping to leave the existing equipment. We have a temporary fence around it permanent, or right now, but we will put arbor visages around it once, obviously, the board approves.
So, I was confused by this picture. Is there a tree there now that you're taking down?
No, that is underneath the trees. We're not taking down any trees.
Okay.
The trees, there's a lot of trees in my backyard.
And you're adding arbor visage around it?
Yeah, just small, just a...
All right, that's great.
Small little section of, to go around. I also, full disclosure, didn't know this was going to be in the meeting, or else I would have taken a little bit more better professional pictures and didn't, wouldn't have written it with my iPhone, so...
Well, you know, you can tell your contractor that because you did the presentation, you're entitled to an offset on his bill.
Exactly.
I would love that. Can I get that in writing?
Not going to happen.
Want to put that in the motion?
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Open this to public for comment. Close public hearing, bring it back. Pretty simple one here.
Yep, it is.
Come on, everyone's fighting over the last one.
I could say I want to put a pizza oven there if you want.
This is a good one, yeah.
In regards to the appeal at 1526 Winthrop Road for the existing ground-mounted mechanical unit and pool equipment not immediately adjacent to the building, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because to remove that and actually have it in another area would prevent the reasonable use of the property, including their septic tanks. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because of the orientation of where it is located, and the applicant has agreed to screen it and is aware of screening requirements. The unique circumstances of the property, again, because of where it was originally located and now where it is, makes better use, it makes, prevents it from impacting the septic field, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the most, motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the pool equipment, and additional evergreen plantings should be required to screen the pool equipment from public view, and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting, and must screen it for 12 months of the year.
Support.
Motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Calling item 13, 2776 Turtle Ridge.
My name is Armin Kalajian. I'm the owner of the property. I'm seeking approval on a security gate for security purposes. We've had several break-ins in that, in our subdivisions, and a lot of them come in from my property on the northwest side where there is a nature trail, and there is a different subdivision on the other side, and that's where the entry has been from people that have come in and broken.
And you've gotten the approval of Victor International?
We have approval from Victor International, both on the gates, and I think that was part of my application.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
Got their letter, yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Open this for public comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public comment, bring it back.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
In regards to the appeal, and I'll start with the permission request first. In regards to the appeal at 2776 Turtle Ridge Drive for the accessory structure of a proposed gate in piers, non-illuminated piers, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure will be harmonious and shall not be objectionable to nearby residents for the fact that this is mainly just for security, and it's not higher than four feet that he's requesting, and it's not a very large or long fence. In terms of the dimensional variance, I also move that that be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because to prevent him from providing this fence with a gate would prevent him having the privacy and security that he is seeking for people coming onto the property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, also because this fence will not exceed four feet, and it will be screened, which is going to be part of the approval. Unique circumstances with the property, again, because it's on a road that is adjacent to another subdivision, and there's probably traffic going through this applicant's property, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and a hold harmless must be filed with the township for the driveway gate.
Support.
I have a motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you, you too. Calling item 14, 4700 Hattington. Is the applicant ready?
Hello, and good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Evan Carpenter. I am the contractor representing Stephen Colick at 14, 4700 Hattington. We are here to just request permission of two items. The first one, just permission for the accessory structure of an attached garage by way of a breezeway. The second item is the request for a dimensional variance of a square footage that exceeds the ordinance by 9.5%, which equates to 273 square feet. The applicant, or, I'm sorry, the, my customer is looking to put a garage up. His family recently expanded. He doesn't have a basement, and he's looking for more storage space. And we, the square footage variance came about, we weren't aware, there's a misunderstanding regarding the percentage, and we designed the garage in accordance to his needs, and then upon submit, that was brought about. But we did receive a letter from the HOA. I submitted it today. I got it, I received it today, but I did make copies for the committee.
Oh, great, thank you.
So, I just got it, it's hot off the press, so I think there's, oh, there's nine there.
Okay, thank you.
More than enough. But the garage is harmonious with the home. The architect, you know, he put that in great consideration. It's got all the same architectural details, same roofline height, this facade is of like kind, and we made the decision to add a breezeway to continue that harmony, so it doesn't look like a separate garage, you know, just, you know. So, it's really it.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. I would like to comment on the garage. Close the public comment. So, we do need a permission request for this because we do consider this to be detached garage.
Yes.
Correct.
It's a detached garage?
It is detached. He said attached, it's detached.
It constitutes a significant attachment.
Right. So, just so you include that in the motion, that's the reason I'm pointing that out.
Mr. Chow, make a motion.
Thank you so much.
In regard to the permission request at 4700 Hattington Drive for the attached, well, actually, like we just discussed, the detached garage, right?
Yes.
I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of this accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as it is pretty common for people to expand their garages. And then, moving on to the dimensional variance, I'd like to, for the dimensional variance required for the garage having greater than 50% of the ground floor area of the primary building, I move that this be, this variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the size of the lot and the shape of it. Further, there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that this is, you know, in a good spot in orientation with the home and the lot. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that it is, you know, tacked on to the existing floor plans, and that the floor plan has limitations, and this is not self-created. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. A single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township.
Support.
A motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Calling item 15, 3739 Wabik. Is the applicant ready?
Hello, I'm Andrea Lightborn for Jean Lightborn at 3739 Wabik Lake Drive. We are looking to rebuild the deck on its current footprint. We looked into repairing it, but, you know, it was very expensive and not going to be, you know, insured, so we decided to replace it with better materials. We, the deck company applied for a permit, but they were told that we needed the zoning variance even though it was there when we bought it 20 years ago. It is one of the features that my mom liked. She's 86 and has limited mobility, that's her only, her only access to the outside. And we had the approval of the condo association to do the deck rebuild. I think that is...
And it's going in exactly the same spot?
Exactly the same spot.
Okay, all right, I think that's all we need.
Okay.
Open this to the public. Does anyone like to comment? I can see the back row wants to say something.
[laughing]
Okay, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the board for discussion or motion. Easy.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
In regards, I'm going to start with the permission request first. In regards to the appeal at 3739 Wabik Lake Drive for the proposed deck, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of the property due to the fact that this is replacing and actually upgrading the current deck that was there. In terms of the dimensional variance for the proposed deck located in the front yard, I will go for that next. I move that that also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because preventing from replacing that would prevent reasonable use of the property as well as the unique situation in terms of this particular family dynamic. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. For one, they have approval, and this is, again, replacing something that has already been there for quite a bit of a minute of time. Unique circumstances of the property, again, there was already a deck on the frontage, and so therefore, that makes this unique, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Okay, thanks. A question, is the permit that we already...
Yes.
Is that good?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good question.
So, calling item 16, 3267 East Bradford Drive.
Hi, good evening. I'm Philip Trautman, the homeowner, and we're looking to put a hot tub in our rear/side yard. We positioned it so that it's the space that's the greatest distance between our neighbors. The backyard, our neighbor, is like their side yard, so it's kind of like the forest lane comes in there, so it's, so our backyard, we'd be viewing their side yard. And then, our neighbor to the south is pretty much equidistant from our lot line, so there's a pretty, really large side yard between the two yards. So, that's where we're positioned, and we'll have privacy vegetation for our enjoyment and to shield from neighbors and all that stuff.
Any questions from the board? Open this to the public. Would you like to speak? Close public hearing.
With respect to the property located at 3267 Bradford Drive East, I would move to grant the permission request for the proposed hot tub because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The proposed hot tub is compatible with adjoining neighbors and is an accessory structure routinely found in properties like this and will not be objectionable or cause any nuisance factors to other neighbors. With respect to the dimensional variance, I would move that that be approved because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. The practical difficulty exists by virtue of the shape of the lot and the placement of the home. Because it's a unique shape, it results in a very small backyard, which necessitates this being shifted to the side and thus being placed in the rear yard. This makes compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance burdensome. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors, and the unique circumstances exist by virtue of this parcel being in that shape, and it's not self-created. If this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and you're showing that you have plans to put it... have plans to put in evergreen plantings to screen the hot tub from public view and those plantings must meet or exceed the height of the hot tub at the time of installation.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So, calling the next item, 17217 Dordan.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sabrina with Moser Design here on behalf of the clients at 217 Dordan. So, we are requesting a dimensional variance to put a fence in the front yard setback as you'll see along Hickory Grove. The reasoning for the fence for the clients is kind of multipurpose. They moved in a few weeks ago and are currently in the process of designing a pool, so we are requesting the forefoot to kind of preemptively prepare for that. And then they also have small children, so being off of Hickory Grove, which is pretty busy, kind of more for the safety of the kids and kind of their peace of mind with letting kind of their kids play in their yard. The layout that we designed the fence is kind of based on a few things. One, maximizing the usable space for the fence. Obviously, the grade changes pretty significant, but giving kind of the most room they can achieve. So, due to that, the significant grade changes kind of right in the center of the property as well as some of the existing trees, you'll kind of see that cluster kind of smack dab in the middle of the lawn. And then there's also a retention pond that kind of causes issues if we were to move the fence kind of inward. We designed this to go around the perimeter of the property, obviously about six or eight feet setback off of it to include evergreen screening around the whole fence to properly screen it from view. Also, as a side note, that along Hickory Grove, since that sidewalk is retained up, that fence will not be visible from that side of the road. It's probably about three, the property is probably about three feet below this actual sidewalk. And then this was also submitted to the Neighborhood Association and they did approve this.
So, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but are the trees on Hickory Grove, is that on the property?
It's kind of just outside. I don't know why it's drawn like that, but they would be within the property.
So, it's, the drawing's wrong?
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure to adjust that, but, yeah, I think we thought the property went to the wall, which obviously for the drawing it does not. But, yeah, we'll make sure that the trees are within the property as well as the fence.
Okay. Any other questions?
How much space on the other side of the fence again, for the trees?
It'll range probably six to eight feet, but we're planning on probably putting the trees in first and then having the fence run inside so that it, the amount of space is what's required.
Thank you.
That's a good way to do it.
Makes it a little easier.
Can you open this to public for comment? Close public. And bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion.
You don't need to do a permission request, it's just a variance.
Oh, I just have to do the variance?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so in regards to the appeal at 217 Dordan, is that Dordan? Yes. Is that how you say it?
Dordan?
Dordan?
Maybe I mispronounced it.
For the variance for proposed fence to be located in a secondary front yard, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome mainly because this home is on a quarter lot and also they have young children and so they want to make sure that they can use the property and feel that the children are safe. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors mainly because also this will be heavily screened and there's an extensive landscape plan and they also have support and approval from their association. The unique circumstances of this property include a couple of things, multiple frontages, sloping topography, so that is also a burden and because of that it is not self-created. So, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. An additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the fence from public view and must exceed the height of the fence at the time of planting for 12 months of the year.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Can I make a comment to you?
Yes.
Just to convey to Brittany, I noticed she's been doing a lot of the letters now to us.
Okay.
On these matters. It'd be really helpful to tell her if she put a little more information into her letters on what it is she's doing and why.
Okay. Kind of like how I explain the purpose.
Yes, exactly, exactly. That's what we used to get before, so it just is, it makes it a lot easier and you have to say a lot less.
No worries.
So, as long as we're giving feedback, Sabrina, I think you've gotten some tough assignments from Matt.
Oh, yeah.
I had to sit through this meeting. I hope at the appropriate time he thanks you or compensates you in some way.
He usually always thanks me when I send him that we passed.
Okay, well, I know, it just seems like you get some really tough assignments, so.
He does a good job.
And you're a good job.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so we appreciate it, so thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 17, excuse me, 18 now, 6676 Telegraph.
Good evening, board members. My name is Timothy Muller. I'm the owner of Curb Appeal Concepts, the sign contractor at 4040 Montgomery Drive in Shelby Township. I'm here tonight on behalf of Joe Vicari and Andiamo's Restaurant. Recently, about 45 days ago, they did a complete rebrand on the whole entire restaurant, did a bunch of stuff to the exterior as well as the interior. I've gotten permission to the east-facing sign. He's actually going to be going in tomorrow morning and I'm requesting a variance to allow that north-facing sign in the paperwork. It says south-facing, but it's actually a north-facing sign. There's a current sign there and I wanted to replace it with the same exact sign that we got the approval to put on the east elevation. Same size, same layout and everything.
Pretty simple, any questions? Open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close public hearing, bring it back. Simple, just needs the sign on the north side.
Mr. Chau, make a motion.
Thank you.
In regard to the appeal at 6676 Telegraph Road for the variance for secondary signage, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact there is already a sign and it's necessary to broadcast your restaurant from traffic coming from the north or going south, I'm sorry. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that many businesses in the area have signs of the such. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated given that it is setback a little bit and would benefit from additional signage and this is not self-created. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Calling item 1981 Telegraph.
You made it.
Good thing we didn't bring food, it would be cold by now. I don't have 165-pound dog and I don't have a 24...
It would not be cold, it would be eaten.
Good enough. So, I'm Steve Davidson, Director of Construction for Wing at North, Wingstop franchisee with the property at 1981 South Telegraph. There is currently existing monument sign with an open space and we are requesting to be able to put our sign in that space.
Thank you for that perfect explanation. Anything open in the public? Anyone like to comment on this one? Close the public hearing?
Steve Davidson.
This is a really simple one. Requires very little effort and thought.
With respect to property located at 1981, does that mean it's mine?
No, no. I'm just saying. At this point in the evening, this is a...
South Telegraph Road.
With your eyes closed.
I would move to grant the request for secondary signage because the applicant has demonstrated compliance or has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. This business is located on Telegraph Road, which is a highly traveled road and very fast speed limit and the additional signage is really needed for people to be able to know that something is located within that center. There's no injustice to the adjoining properties, which are also utilizing that secondary signage, and the unique circumstances are established by virtue of the location of this business and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. That was entertaining.
It's time to bring food.
I think we can do seven.
Yeah, I think we can too, if you guys are up for it.
Yeah, the agenda.
I just said that.
I need a pre-commitment on who's making the motion, no? Okay, so are we going to move to take it, or I guess we can just take it up?
Oh, yeah, I'll move to remove it from the table.
Okay. Second?
Second, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's off the table, into play.
Andrew, you want to present?
Oh, absolutely. The proposal that you have before you is an applicant seeking to add a ground-mounted mechanical generator, which is located in the rear yard, however, it's not immediately adjacent to the residential building as he's setback 10 feet from the side lot line and 30 feet from the rear lot line. And the applicant has indicated that this is the best location for, per his contractor as well as in terms of not having any negative impact on his adjacent neighbor to the side, which would be to the south.
Looks like it's more than 10 feet away to me.
Yeah, it doesn't end?
So, I'll open this to the public.
Not immediately adjacent to the building, I'm sorry, and setback 10 feet from the side lot line.
Anyone wants to come in off the street and make a comment?
So, correct, I stand corrected, it's actually, it's further than 10 feet from, but, so the variance is to not be located within five feet of the structure.
So, I'll open the public hearing for anyone to come in off the street and make a comment. Close public hearing, bring it back.
Great.
Okay, so with regard to the appeal at 7313 Brookside Village Court for the ground-mounted mechanical unit, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty given the fact that the compliance of the, with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome given the layout of the lot and the home. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that these are common throughout the township and proper care is being made to assure that the adjoining neighbors are not negatively impacted. Unique circumstances with the property have been given, demonstrated, given that, once again, the layout of the home and the lot and it's not self-created due to the fact that this is an existing condition. If approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the generator and additional evergreen planting will most likely be required to screen the generator from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the generator at the time of planting.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request is granted. Do I have a motion to adjourn? One second?
You have support?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.